Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Capitola City Council. Thank you, everyone that's in the audience for being here this evening. And I also want to thank everyone at home who is watching on TV. Can you hear back there? John, is that better? Okay. Yes. If you can't hear, we're not speaking loud enough. Please let us know. So we will begin our meeting this evening with a roll call. Please, Sue.
Councilmember Harlan.
Here.
Councilmember Norton.
Here.
Councilmember Bator.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Mayor Story.
Here. Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll ask Councilmember Harlan to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next, we have a presentation of proclamation. Because September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, we want to take this opportunity this evening to acknowledge and recognize childhood cancer. I don't think that there's anything in life that is more heartbreaking than to see a young child that is suffering through cancer. And nothing more heartbreaking to see a child who is lost to us because of cancer. And I think that we, as a society, should do everything that we possibly can within our means to end childhood cancer. And I think it starts by having an awareness of it and for bodies like this to bring attention to it. And I also want to thank the folks that are here from Jacob's Heart, the Children's Cancer Support Services, for being here this evening. And so I'm going to come down right up front to present this proclamation. And I want to ask if, is Lori Butterworth here this evening? If you could come up, Lori, and...
Can we all come? Is that okay?
Oh, certainly. Please, come on now. Hi, Lori. See, come up here, you know, to my right. And hi, Sam. Hi.
Judy.
Judy, thanks for being here. Bobby, thanks for being, yeah, hi, thanks for being here. Here, come over here and look, the camera, the folks that are at home are going to be right there. So wave, yes. And I'm going to read the proclamation and then maybe, I know you introduced yourself to me just now, but maybe I'll hand you the microphone and you could introduce yourself and the agency that you represent and the organization that you work with to fight childhood cancer. So, and so this evening, we have Mayor's Proclamation. And this says honoring Jacob's Heart Children's Cancer Support Services, but it sounds like we have other organizations that are represented here as well. But, and we want to acknowledge that September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And we should know that each day, 42 children in the United States are diagnosed with cancer and more than 40,000 children undergo treatment for cancer each year. And according to the National Childhood Cancer Foundation, cancer remains the leading cause of death by disease among children, more than asthma, diabetes, cystic fibrosis, congenital anomalies, and AIDS combined. And that families of children with cancer in the city of Capitola receive essential services from Jacob's Heart Children's Cancer Support Services, a local organization that has gained national awards and recognition for improving the quality of life for more than 500 local children with cancer and their families. And the oncology department at Lucille Packard Children's Hospital at Stanford has worked closely with Jacob's Heart for the past 16 years as a trusted community partner in providing family-centered care that addresses the emotional, practical, and financial struggles of families of children with cancer in Capitola. And it is important for all Capitola residents to recognize the impact of pediatric cancer on families within our community and honor the lives of children in our community whose lives have been cut short by cancer. And therefore, I, Sam Story, Mayor of Capitola, do hereby declare September as Children's Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Capitola and do hereby honor Jacob's Heart Children's Cancer Support Services for 16 years of outstanding support to our community and acknowledge the organization's contributions to Childhood Cancer Awareness Month honoring children with cancer in our community. So I'm honored, really, to present this proclamation to you, Lori. We'll take that now, and I don't, if each of you want to...
Sure. Sure. Okay.
My name is Bobby Burns. I'm a board member of Jacob's Heart and also the parent of a cancer survivor. My son was, had cancer when he was four, and I'm happy to say he's a survivor. And so, very excited about Jacob's Heart and all that they do for the community.
I'll go last because I have a pitch.
Hi, my name is Melissa Burke, and I represent Packard Children's Hospital. I'm also a Jacob's Heart board member, and I just want to thank the city council for your recognition of all the work that Jacob Heart has done.
I'm Judy Barbata, a board member of Jacob's Heart, and I encourage you, when you see the gold ribbons in September, to get one and wear them, and those are to signify that we are honoring and aware of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Hi, I'm Vicki Malindi. I am a parent of a child who fought for over eight years, unfortunately lost his battle to cancer, but was both at Lucille Packard Children's Hospital and a Jacob's Heart big fan. Thank you.
And I'm Lori Butterworth, the founder and executive director of Jacob's Heart. And I want to just let everyone know that these proclamations are extremely meaningful to our community as a whole and to our families and our children in particular, the siblings. We need to remember siblings of children with cancer, children who are lost to cancer, and as a community, gather support on their behalf. So in September, we will be celebrating every Sunday. Every Sunday in September happens to be a multiple of seven, so it's very easy to remember. So September 7th, and don't worry, I have flyers, I'll leave them in the back. September 7th in Scotts Valley, we'll have the Kid Rages Carnival. And on September 14th, there will be a run, a family run, in Monterey. September 21st, a Kid Rages celebration in Watsonville. And we'll wrap it all up in September 28th in Aptos for a 5K. There's plenty for you to do and plenty of ways to support these amazing, amazing children and their families. So we really want to thank you for taking this time. And your staff has been just so, everybody's been so supportive and wonderful. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you for being here and giving us an opportunity to bring more attention and awareness, I think, to a very serious issue. Thank you for all your work at Jacob's Heart, for everyone who participates on the board, and for you that have personally suffered through with your children having cancer. Our condolences go out to you and for your personal struggles with that. And I hope that everyone here in Capitola will look forward to these events that Lori mentioned in September, be aware, and let's give as much as we possibly can to organizations such as Jacob's Heart so that we can finally start to put an end to, well, cancer, the big C with anyone, and particularly with our most precious children. Thank you so much for being here. Right. Thank you, Bobby.
Mayor Story, for those who may not know, we're very fortunate in Capitola for the Lucille Packard Children's Hospital established a clinic here, an office in the city of Capitola, and it's really special, serves a lot of people at this end of the Bay Area that would otherwise have to travel up to the hospital.
Right. Well, thank you, Mike, for bringing that to our attention as well. And, yeah, we want to welcome Lucille Packard to our community. So, thank you once again. Next on the agenda, we did have scheduled a presentation regarding the donation received for the Aussie dog park, but I understand that that is going to be continued till the meeting in September. So, thank you. So we'll continue that item. But next, we'll move to the report on closed session. John?
Thank you, Mayor Story. The council discussed four items in closed session this evening. We reported that the Ray Allen Leonard versus City of Capitola case has been settled, subject to court confirmation. The city's contribution is $55,000, and the successor agency's contribution to that settlement will be about $85,000, if I'm not mistaken. Fifty-four, five?
Fifty-nine and eighty-eight-five.
Fifty-nine and eighty-eight-five. And that's going to be the subject of a discussion later this evening in terms of a loan to the successor agency. The council also heard from the city manager with regard to the negotiations for the disposition of the new Brighton Middle School Gymnasium from the city of Capitola to the Soquel Union Elementary School District. And that agreement is on tonight's open agenda as well for the council's consideration. The council heard from the city manager with regard to a minor item of negotiation under the Capitola Police Captain's Bargaining Group, and also with regard to the Department Head group. And a Department Head group item is on tonight's open session agenda as well. Finally, the council had a brief discussion concerning the tort claim of Anthony Lopez Ortiz, but took no action in closed session. And I believe that claim is subject, is scheduled for rejection on the council's open session agenda tonight. That's my oral report on closed session.
Right. Thank you, John. Next on the agenda is the discussion of additional materials, and we had no additional materials here this evening. So we'll move on to additions and deletions to the agenda. Does staff, any additions or deletions?
Staff, there's no changes.
Okay, no changes. Or council members, any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items not on tonight's agenda. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Brian Peoples, Aptos Rail Trail. And just wanted to, we're in a voting or election year, or remind all the candidates that we have the train trussel going through in Aptos Rail Trail. We really, really, truly will benefit, community will benefit from a trail. There's a big report coming out. The initial report is October. This council has a seat on Regional Transportation Commission, so it's a vital, vital opportunity for our newly elected, or people who want to be elected, to draw an understanding of what's going on with the train tracks and the rail. And at this time, I just want to recognize one of the council members who's actually up for reelection, Mike. And I go to the Regional Transportation Commission's, and he does a phenomenal job representing Capitola, representing the community in making smart decisions. So, you know, if I can just communicate that out to the public, that Mike, who currently sits on the council, does a very good job understanding what's going on in the Regional Transportation Commission, how it impacts the community, and what's best in interest for Capitola. So I just wanted to point that out with our new election people coming out trying to become council members. They should understand that your organization plays a key role in the Regional Transportation Commission. So just wanted to point that out. Thanks. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples.
Mr. Mayor, I'm the alternate, and I need to note that Councilmember Norton does a lot of the heavy lifting on the RTC.
Okay. Thank you, Mike, for that clarification. Dennis, did you want to add anything at this time?
No, there's nothing to say. I think the public knows I'm the representative, so...
Okay. All righty. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on items not on tonight's agenda? Yes. Good evening.
Hello.
Hi.
How are y'all? Recognize that pronoun, don't you? I'm Sandy Erickson. I live in Capitola on Cabrillo Street. I glanced at this quickly. I don't think it's on the agenda because I think it's a done deal, but I wanted to address your vote to increase the transient occupancy tax. While I'm not that enamored or upset over the tax, I am terribly upset over how you did it, that you called a special meeting, gave three days' notice, and if I'm reading what I saw, I was walking by City Hall and saw the sign, and it appears to me you posted an emergency meeting on July the 28th, and you held it on the 31st. And I want to know what the emergency was. I think anytime that you come forward and do things like that, it smacks of trying to manipulate the voters. You've already shown this year, and quite recently, that you don't give the voters credit enough for being able to elect a treasurer. And so I think that doing this is a real slap in the face to the voters. And I think that, I sincerely hope that there's opposition mounted to this. I might get me a little sign, come down here for the next few weeks and say, I think that people should not support it, purely because of the way you did it. And I really think you ought to be ashamed. Absolutely no emergency about this. If Santa Cruz has one more percent TOT tax than we do, maybe we'll get business from Santa Cruz because somebody's paying attention and will come here. So, you know, when you start doing things that are rushed, like I said, it's an insult to the voters, that's when we make mistakes, things don't always turn out right. And I would hope the two of you that I appreciate voted no on this would campaign against it. You know, it's, I was just really disappointed. And so that's what I wanted to say. The other thing I want to say is, I've been coming down here asking for a sidewalk down Park Avenue for 16 years. It's a safety issue. We've had a lot of traffic this year up and down through there. Baby strollers, bicycles, people walking, it's more than usual. I think tourism is up, and I'm glad to see that. We got a parking lot for the tourists, and y'all post-haste got that done, just lickety-split because somebody was interested in it. I wish you would take an interest in the citizens. Because there again, no regard for the people who live here, it appears, only for the tourists. And I'm all for the tourists because I know they come here and spend their money. But I hope that that sidewalk gets in pretty quick. I'm not going to hold my breath, and so that's what I wanted to say. But again, I am terribly disappointed that you thought putting a transient occupancy tax on rated as an emergency. And I hope the people don't agree with you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comments portion of our meeting and bring it to city council, city treasurer, staff comments. We'll begin with staff comments. None?
Staff comments.
Okay. No staff comments. Madam Treasurer?
I wanted to bring your attention, the check register. When you review that, you'll notice that the emergency fund goes from $784,000 down to $584,000. The $200,000 was used for the flood wall, the retaining wall. So just wanted to note that difference. So the emergency fund's now at about, close to $600,000, so that's it.
All right. Thank you. Council comments? Yeah, Mike?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I attended the, the community justice, the county justice committee meeting. Was it the CJC? Criminal Justice System. I hate saying that criminal word. It's an awe-inspiring meeting with law enforcement and judges and people far more qualified than myself, but today's special presentation was the addressing of the absences of children in school, and they've been able to draw a correlation between the percentage of days absent in K through 5 with the ability to finish high school, go to college, and have a productive career. And those that do not finish high school have many, many times more odds of going into the criminal justice system than those that do graduate high school. And you wouldn't think that your kindergarten absence record would mean anything, but evidently it does. So I believe that the city manager, who is in attendance with me today, has proposed proclamation for attendance month that he'll be presenting to you, that perhaps next month we could give to the community. Secondly, I'd like to suggest, and I suggested this to the Public Works Director, we have a real situation down at the Esplanade Park with a strip of grass paralleling the beach. We took the effort to save so much water these last months that it, the grass promptly died, turned to dust and dirt, and then we received complaints that it was too dusty. So we turned the sprinklers on for a few minutes the other day, and the first thing I received was a picture of the sprinklers running in my email from a citizen wanting to why we were wasting water. So truly damned if we do and damned if we don't, I think we need to pursue perhaps a proposal from Public Works and make that artificial turf. I don't think any other surface would do. Either we make it real grass and waste the water, or we make it artificial turf because decomposed granite, tan bark, sand, nothing is going to fit the needs of the surfers and the beachgoers like artificial turf will. So something we may want to consider in the future.
Thank you, Mike. The council members? Dennis?
Yes. If anyone's walked through the village, you know, Capitola Village in the last 15 years, they'll notice as you're walking along, there's bricks in the sidewalk that have names of community members, different groups, different monuments to different people. And that was done with the first phase of the village master plan improvement in the village. Well, we haven't got to phase two or phase three. Someday we will. But recently, we replaced the sidewalks along the front of the Esplanade in front of all the restaurants, and including the areas going back up in front of Margaritaville. And the Chamber, Capitola Chamber Commerce is now offering bricks for sale. If anyone would like to have a family memento, a moment for Grandma Emily, or any saying they'd like to have put in their walkway, for $100, you can buy a brick that will permanently go in front of the restaurants in available brick areas in the village. And so it's kind of a free, first-come, first-served basis. You can contact the Capitola Chamber Commerce. Also, it's on our city scroll, you can get the information from that. But if you contact the Capitola Chamber Commerce at 475-6522, and they will sign you up for a brick. It's a $100 investment, but you have a lifetime or longer memento to your family in that sidewalk. So those are available right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dennis. Ed?
I'm good.
Stephanie?
Art and Wine Festival, Begonia Festival is coming up, and everybody's looking for some more volunteers, and if you can help out, it would be great. Contact the organizations. The museum is also looking for volunteers for weekend help there and also down at the Begonia Festival. And it's always a lot of fun, so come on down and help out your community, even if it's just for a couple hours, it's going to be fun.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I have one more.
Yeah, sure, Dennis.
Steve, just for, could you give us an update report on safe routes to school study? Thank you.
I don't have any current information. I know they have completed their site investigations of the four campuses that they looked at. And... and they had then gone and done some survey work with the students and that. Last I heard, they're still compiling that, and I'd be happy to check on that and get some more information to you.
One thing that we discussed with them when we met with them was the idea that the city was willing to offer our parking lot as a drop-off point for the school. Well, we're a week away from school starting again, and makes me real skeptical about hiring of consultants and not presenting timelines or ability back. They should have really been back to us with some kind of answer before the school year started. And so it'd be really good to get a response from them and find out where we're paying, in fact, we're paying them today. We're paying $18,000 to these consultants, and I know that's a grant, but still we're paying $18,000 to them, and we haven't seen any, if we haven't seen any product of their labor.
I'd be happy to check. I'm sorry, I don't have a current status.
Okay. Maybe can we ask them to come in and give some presentation to the council on where they're at?
Well, I think that's scheduled once they've completed their report, but.
Okay. Can we get a timeline from that?
Yeah, I'll find out.
Thank you very much.
Is that it, Dennis?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just one point of clarification. I think just for members of the public, your July 31st meeting was not an emergency meeting under the Brown Act. It was a special meeting. Under the Brown Act, special meetings are authorized with 24 hours' notice, and I believe you provided over 72 hours' notice of posting the agenda and announced it the week before. So there was compliance with the Brown Act, and it was not an emergency meeting. It was a special meeting authorized by the Brown Act.
Right. Thank you for that clarification, John. I wanted to take this opportunity, and if ever you will just indulge me, because I received a letter in my mail here that was pretty special to me, and I wanted to share it with everyone and the council members. It stated August 2nd, 2014, and it reads, "My husband, Mike Hatchett, was a participant in the Capitola Car Show, June 6th and 7th. He is 75 years old and has had seven heart attacks, starting in 1977, when he retired after 20 years in the United States Air Force. Sometimes when he is very tired, he forgets things. This particular day, he forgot to put our bags that carry all the cleaning supplies with the truck, plus our lawn chairs, back inside the bed of the pickup. He had not even realized it until the next morning, when he drove in to park the pickup on the street. One of your police officers saw him, came over to tell him that he had noticed our things sitting on the sidewalk, right after Mike took off for the hotel. He was so kind to my husband. He had stored the bag overnight in a safe place, and then the next morning retrieved the bag and helped Mike set up his chairs. Then he handed Mike a business card and told him if he needed any more help during the day, to let him know, because he would be happy to help him in any way he could. My husband mentioned to me how great of a person he had been to him. Then he looked at the business card, and he found out the nice, caring, young officer was the chief of police, Rudy Escalante. I just wanted to tell you how thankful we were to have met such a wonderful person as your chief. Your town is truly blessed. Thank you and see you next year. Gay and Mike." And I know, Chief, that you really appreciate being called the young officer. But, you know, when I saw that, I just had to read and let everybody know and let you know, I think really how proud we are that not only do you service so well and keep our community safe, but you are truly a great ambassador for the city of Capitola. And just, I mean, this, I think, the letter reflects your caring attitude, you know, about both the citizens and people who visit our community. So I hope I didn't embarrass you too much, and if I did, that's just as well, because you deserve to be embarrassed over something like that. Thank you. And now you'll always be known as the young Chief Escalante. With that, we'll bring us to the consent calendar for this evening. These are items that will be passed with one vote unless an item is pulled by either the member of the public or the council members. Is there any member of the public that would like to pull a consent item for separate discussion and vote? Seeing none, I'll ask council members, do you wish to? Yes, Dennis?
I'd like to pull Item C, the check register, please.
I'll move the balance of the consent. Second.
So there's a motion in second to pass the consent calendar excluding Item C. I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Let's deal with Item C now before we get into the general government business. And so Dennis, it's all yours.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have three items on the check register, and basically all three of them can be dealt for the first, on the first page. Number one is Santa Cruz Regional 911. Fees being paid, and I traditionally, as I've been the council, have voted against that, and I will continue to vote against that. I'd just like that noted. The Kimberley Horn Associates, the Safe Routes to School, are paying $18,400. I'm just hoping that we see some results from that survey, being that we're paying this money out. I know it's a grant, but it's still public money, and we need to be watchdogs of what we're paying for. Santa Cruz Conference and Visitors Council, if I understand this correctly, that's a quarterly payment that we make to them?
Not anymore. We shouldn't be doing anything to the CVC. They, didn't they voluntarily?
We collect the TMD for them.
Oh, the TMD?
Collect the TMD and pass it back. And I'm not seeing my finance director tell me I'm incorrect. So yeah, that's the payment that we make to them.
So it's almost $120,000, $130,000 a year that goes in the TMD to, from the city of Capitola?
Probably a quarter. You'll recall that their TMD, I think, is approaching $2, $1.50 a room a night. So you add it up to about a 1% tax, and that would be about right in the course of the year. It's going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars from the city of Capitola.
Wow. Okay. Okay. That's my question. Thank you. So basically, we are the collecting agency. We do not.
Yeah. And you recall, we entered into a contract with them, and we received a percentage cut, basically, from the administration.
Okay. Fine. So I'll move for approval of the check register with me exempting number 77937, the 911 fee.
Second.
Question in second. Any comments? Any member of the public wish to comment on the check register? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Which brings us to general government this evening. And first, we'll begin with a presentation by the Santa Cruz Regional 911 General Manager, Dennis Kidd, regarding the budget cost allocation and services. The recommended action is just to receive the presentation. Good evening, Dennis, and thank you for being here this morning and reporting to us on 911.
So this item is on your agenda this evening at the request of council during the last budget cycle. You'll recall that there were several questions about the costs for 911, and I thought it'd be good to bring Dennis here to give you an overview on the operation and their budget. Dennis has been our general manager now for about two years. He's been with Santa Cruz Regional 911 since 1996, and he's held almost every job that they have there, he tells me. Before coming to Santa Cruz Regional 911, he was with the Huntington Beach Fire Department for more than 10 years, but we don't hold it against him. So with that, Dennis, our general manager for our dispatch center.
Thank you. I just bounce around from surf city to surf city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for inviting me. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and I got a quick PowerPoint. I assume you guys could see it. So who we are, what we do. We are a consolidated emergency communication center, so that means we dispatch for multiple agencies, not just one agency. We recently, in 2011, also consolidated with San Benito County and Hollister. We were formed as a JPA in the early 1990s, and we opened our doors in 1996. So prior to 1996, City Capitola had a police department dispatch center. See, if Santa Cruz had a dispatch center, the county had a dispatch center, Waterville had a dispatch center. 96, we came together and we formed the one dispatch center we operate now. In 2013, some of our statistics is we answered 574-plus phone calls. Of those, almost 150,000 were 911, and of those 911 calls, 69, 70%, 102,000 were wireless 911 calls. So there's been a vast transition from people calling from their home phones to calling from cellular phones. Presents some challenges to us, but it's, that's what's happening in the industry. For Capitola, total, well, the total calls for service dispatched by our agency was 384,661,000. That's total calls dispatched for all agencies. Capitola PD made up about 22,000 of those, and just about 5.71% of all of our calls were Capitola PD calls. Organizational structure, we're a JPA. We have four member agencies, so those are the owners of the JPA and make up the board of directors. City of Capitola, City of Santa Cruz, City of Waterville, and the County of Santa Cruz. So the city managers and the CAO of those agencies make up my board of directors. We also have user agencies, so these are agencies we dispatch for but are not member agencies, so they don't have a vote when it comes to budget and such. And that's all the fire districts within the county, from Boulder Creek all the way down to Waterville, AMR for this county, and San Benito County, and also San Benito County Sheriff's Department, and the City of Hollister Police and Fire Departments. Calls for service, this is our statistics. You could see from 2012 and 2013, and the percentage change for each agency. You see our busiest agency was the City of Santa Cruz Police Department. Almost 104,000 calls for service. Capitola's in there at 22,000, and Capitola had a significant increase from 2012 to 2013 of about 10% in their police calls for service. We have about a $6.5 million budget, and that's for, that just started in this fiscal year. Of that, of course, most of it is salaries. We have $768,000 goes to services and supplies, small capital budget of $355,000, and then debt service for our building and some other items we've had to purchase for $288,000. We divide costs up amongst all of our member and user agencies based on a cost-sharing formula. So the cost-sharing formula is recalculated every three years, and it's based on the previous two years. So we add up the calls for service. Certain calls for service have a higher priority and are what are called weighted calls for service. So for instance, a cold auto burglary report is much lower priority than an in-progress bank robbery. So the in-progress bank robbery gets weighted, and so that gets counted. 25% of the weighted calls, we have 25% of unweighted calls, so that's just all calls for service. And then we also have 50% of the cost-sharing formula is based on staffing and how we staff the center. And the way that's determined is we look at our maximum staffing level of, which is between 10 and 11 dispatchers, so we figured it at 10 and 1/2. And we divide up how, what are they doing when they're in the room, and what percentage of what they're doing is then reflected in the cost-sharing formula. So you could see, based on all of those statistics and all those percentages add up to where Capitola, City of Capitola pays us 7.5%. 7.56% of our overall budget is paid by Capitola. The annual cost here, so the 7.56% for Capitola was $424,000 this year, so that's your total cost for 911 dispatch services, all hazards, 24/7, 365, everything that happens in this city that we deal with, it's going to run you $424,000. That includes all of our capital, all of our building, we got to have bi-power, everything. So that's your total cost. And you could see how the costs are divided up amongst all the other agencies. Historical costs for City of Capitola, I thought you might find this interesting. So as you run down, you could see you peaked in fiscal year eight and nine at almost $600,000. Then we, of course, started reducing budgets in nine, 10, and you slowly worked your way down. Fiscal year 11, 12 was a significant decrease, and that was based on adding Hollister and San Benito into our organization, just as economies of scale, as we got a little bit bigger, everybody saved a little bit of money. In 12, 13, we were sort of stable, and then in 13, 14, there was another significant decrease, and that was based on a change in the way we share revenue amongst the agencies. So we bring in revenue for other services, and previous to 13, 14, that revenue was shared amongst the four members and all the users. So everybody got a little bit of piece of that. There was a financial review committee that was put together in, prior to 13, 14, that decided just share that revenue with the member agencies. The owners of the JPA get that revenue to offset their costs. So that was basically a one-time refund, and so last year, your costs went down 5%. So this year, when we don't have that one-time reset, your costs appear to go up, but they're really stable with what they've been over the last previous years without, when you don't compare it to that, to just last year. Capitola's specific, so again, your costs are $424,000. Services we provide, 24/7, 365, of course, police dispatch. We perform after-hours records functions, so your police records go home at night. They don't work on the weekends. We do all the records entries for your agency. Again, that's a significant savings in personnel costs to not have to run a 24-hour records. We do after-hours call, of course, for your Public Works, and any other services that need to be done by the 24/7 agency that's there to answer those calls. And we also are manager, we manage your records management system and the mobile data computers. So that's all, that's part of your $424,000 cost, too, is your records management system and your police department. The software part, we manage, and also the computers in your cars, we manage and service them. Some challenges that are coming up in the next few years. We have a CAD system, which is computer-aided dispatch, that is becoming end-of-life. They've told us that we will need to replace that in fiscal year 17, 13. We estimate that to be one to 1 and 1/2 to maybe $2 million. We have a logging recorder that's going to be, need to be replaced for $50,000. We have console furniture, that's the original furniture that was put in the building in 1996 that at some point will need to be replaced. Our building is coming up on 20 years' old, so we assume at some point it's going to need roof, roof repair, new roof, so we estimate that at $100,000. So these are just some of the big-ticket items that we foresee coming up. Future operational challenges, there's something out there called Next Generation 911, and that really has to do with people having the ability to text to 911, which on the surface doesn't seem like would be necessary, but for the hearing impaired, it's a great service to be able to provide. So I'm really looking forward to being able to implement that in our county and not have hearing impaired people have to go through a third party to get ahold of us, which is what happens now, but they can come directly to us. Plus, texting to 911 could come into place if you're locked in the closet because you have a home intruder and you don't want to speak, or something like that. So it's something that's needed and something that's coming, and we're looking forward to that. Also, in Next Generation 911, it's when people call on a cellphone, we'll be able to plot that on a map and assign an address to that. Right now, we don't have the ability to do that. So when you call from your landline, we get an address right away. When you call from a cellphone, we get a lat-long. I can't dispatch Junior Officer Escalante to latitude, longitude. He's not going to know where to go. He needs to have an address. So that's the next step in Next Generation 911. So the benefits of consolidation, from my perspective, it's really an economy of scale. It was proven when we consolidated with the City of Hollister and the County of San Benito. Not only did they save money in their cost of dispatch, they got much better service, and all of our members saved money, too, because we were able to charge them more, give back a little bit to the owners of the JPA, and everybody was better off. To have technology, we have state-of-the-art CAD system. We're getting ready to buy a new one. We have systems that you couldn't buy as a small agency. You couldn't buy, like the City of Scotts Valley, they don't have a robust CAD system because they just, it doesn't make sense for them to spend that much money on a CAD system. But when we come together, it makes much more sense to be able to do that. Human resources, so we are our own human resources, so our testing and hiring process really focuses on what we need to be successful for our employees. We don't have to go through the county personnel on a list of 100 people and them telling us how to test. We get to test ourselves and come up with our own list and come up with our own criteria as to who we think are going to be successful, not only successful dispatchers, but successful employees and add to the organization. We hire for our culture. We really do. It's a unique group of people who work terrible hours. It's a, it's a unique group of people who work terrible hours, doing a very difficult job, and we're able to get just really good humans to work up there and hopefully make them really good dispatchers. That's the end of my presentation, if there's any questions.
Other questions?
Yes.
Yes, Mike.
What, what sort of infrastructure do you need to do location services for cellphone calls? Because the number of calls you have coming in from cellphones, not having to be able to pinpoint them is, and I know the technology's out there, is it a capital outlay, is it a time issue? When, when can we see this happen?
It's supposed to be a state network. So the, the 911 system is a state phone system. It's transitioning from a state phone system to a state network system. So we're waiting for the state. Now, there's work we'll have to do on our side, mapping work and stuff like that, that the state, of course, is not paying for. But it's about the state finishing their network and infrastructure for us to be, be ready to move to, to that.
What's the timeline for that?
That's about two years away.
Okay. Seems like it's, you know, your calls, almost 70% are coming in over cellphone.
Yeah, we do have the ability right now, as it is right now with what's called Phase Two wireless to, and I was sort of facetious when I said it, but we do, we do, we can get a lat-long on a phone, generally speaking. And we could put that on a map and estimate sort of where that is, right? But in the next gen, it'll actually plot to a parcel, and it'll say the address of this parcel is this, and it'll be very similar to the old 911 system where, where you got a phone call from, from a parcel and you got the address of that parcel.
Right. Because when I, when I've observed your operators in action, when I've visited the site, getting a coherent address from a caller, sometimes it's a challenge, they do an amazing job, but it seems like that's really key when they're calling on a cellphone. The fact that you've dropped our, or our costs have dropped almost $100,000 in the course of 20 years, if we had had this ourselves 20 years ago, certainly our costs would have just increased, there'd have been opportunity to decrease it. So congratulations on the consolidation, it was well done.
Thank you.
Yes.
All council members are, of course, welcome to come up to visit and just give them a call ahead of time. I've done it, it's absolutely fascinating, they do, they do a fabulous job.
When I was a dispatcher, you sat with me, I don't know if you remember.
It was just, it's a real eye-opener. You have no, you have no idea what they do and how stressful that is, you know, that job is. I mean, they're wonderful people that do that job, it's so important.
Stephanie, you know, I, I watched a mock bank robbery take place, and they had the 911 operator's screen projected inside the bank so they could, and we could listen to everything that went on. It was remarkable, the coordination and exactly the steps they took from the moment the silent alarm was pressed to every, all the different municipalities being alerted, and it was a, it was a real eye-opener, and anytime that that happens again, I'd, I'd love to see it again. It was poetry in motion, it's nice.
I know that when you, when you're on the road and you call 911 and CHP asks you where you are, because it goes to Monterey County, I think?
Well, cellular 911.
And around Watsonville goes to.
It's, it's changed over the years. So, so going back in time, they were car phones, right? They weren't mobile phones, they were car phones. So it made sense, if you're in your car and you're calling 911, you probably need the Highway Patrol. So they all went to the Highway Patrol. As that transitioned to, these were just phones, personal phones that we had, there was a project about four years ago where they looked at every cell tower and every receiver on every cell tower, and they said, the, the calls that hit that receiver, where do they mostly belong? Do they mostly belong with Highway Patrol, or do they mostly belong with the local government agency? And so they changed the routing of that. So it's gotten much better over the years. We still have the ability within the 911 system to quickly transfer those, because they're not always perfect, of course, but it's way better than it used to be, and I can't even imagine being a CHP center without that, because they would just be inundated with cellular.
And when you see a car over on the side of the road with its lights blinking, should you pull over at the next exit and, and call 911? Or are you finding that there are enough, that that person has either called or there are enough other people that have called that you don't have to? Do you recommend that people still call? Are you finding the need for that? Because I see it all the time, driving home at night, at midnight, I'm, I'm never quite sure whether other people have called or whether I should bother.
I would recommend calling, because what if nobody did?
You never know.
I mean, I can tell you a story, when I was in Huntington Beach as a fire dispatcher, where, you know, there was a house fire in the middle of the day, and resources, you know, we dispatched them as soon as we got the calls, and they were there within five minutes. And then there was a big uproar in the community that it took the fire department 20 minutes to get there. Well, it was such a big fire that took off so fast, everybody assumed everybody else had made the call, and nobody had really made a call for 15 minutes.
Oh.
And so it's, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make the assumption that people are calling. Oftentimes, on incidents on the freeway, we do get multiple calls, and we understand that, but rather have more calls than no calls.
Dennis?
Thank you for your presentation, Dennis.
You're welcome.
Scotts Valley's not in the JPA?
They're not.
So if you call from Scotts Valley, you don't, can't call 911?
You called 911 and you get Scotts Valley Police Dispatch.
It goes on through?
Yeah.
Okay. In the cost breakdowns, the funding mechanism, the funding, on the breakdowns, Watsonville's at 15.47 and Capitola's at 7.86. Watsonville has five times the population the City of Capitola has. Why are we paying such a higher percentage in comparison to a city like that?
The, I can go to that slide real quick.
The calls for service.
Call volume.
Call volume, the weighted call volume. Readiness to serve.
It's going to be, Jamie was taught this lesson, so maybe I. So the interesting thing is that only 50% of your total cost has to do with calls for service. The other portion is staffing. So Watsonville has one radio channel and has one dispatcher sitting there 24 hours a day talking on the radio. Capitola has one dispatcher and, and one radio channel and one dispatcher sitting there talking on the radio all the time. So even though the Capitola dispatcher isn't dispatching as many calls as the Watsonville dispatcher is, they're still there, and they still have to be there to perform. So that's why in, in this, in the minimum staffing breakdown, Watsonville's 6.32%, Capitola's 4.8%. So Capitola's a little bit higher than what, than if they didn't, if the Capitola didn't have its own radio channel, it would be a much different picture, because we wouldn't have to have that body waiting to dispatch on that channel. So that's, that's why the cost is like this.
Dennis, when a call comes in, how, how does the line tell you what dispatch dispatcher to go to?
The call does not. So the call could be answered by anybody in the room, and we have call takers who just answer calls. But we also ask our radio dispatchers to answer calls if they, if they have the ability to. So they create a call for service in the CAD, and then the CAD routes that call to the proper dispatcher. So if I'm sitting as the Capitola Police Dispatcher, that doesn't mean I'm answering only Capitola phone calls. And if I'm sitting as the Watsonville Police Dispatcher, I'm not just answering Watsonville phone calls, I could be answering anything. So when, when you answer the call, you don't know what it is, and of course, you break down what it is and where it is, and that's how it gets routed to the proper dispatcher who then, who then dispatches it.
Do you think the mechanism we have is fair, fair in allocation of, of funding or dispatch?
I do. I think it is. I think, I think it feels right for the work, the work that we're doing when you compare how much everybody's paying, and you look in the room, and you say, how much work are we doing for the sheriff's office versus how much work are we doing for Capitola? Capitola's 7%, the sheriff's office is 25%. That, I mean, that feels right for me. The sheriff's office has a search and rescue unit, you know, they have SWAT teams, they have other things that, that create more work for us. But they don't, but they also have 24-hour records, so we don't do that records function for them. You know, so, so you have to, there's lots of factors that go in, whereas if we didn't do records for Capitola after hours, you'd either have an officer driving in from the street into the office to enter that stolen vehicle or that missing child, or you'd have to have a records person working there. So, so there's a savings to you for not having to do that for us taking that cost for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But the reality is that the single channel does cost us a lot, and it gets us a lot, too. And so it's always a decision, it's a conversation that Chief and I have had several times, is how much is it worth to Capitola to have that independent channel? Because it, you know, the cost of that is probably about the cost of another officer. So if we were willing to get off of our own channel, we probably would have funding for another officer. But that also means that we're competing on the radio channel with whomever we're sharing it with. So.
We have the fastest response time of any department in the county. That's invaluable.
Right. And a lot of that's related to having your own channel.
And we'd need five employees to cover all the shifts of a week, so do the math, plus the radio equipment, on and on. I don't know how Scotts Valley does it, God bless them, but.
Plus they have that fabulous computer that, that call can show whether there's an alleyway, so you can tell the officer, whoever's responding, go around the alley to the right, go around the alley to the left, go around that way. I mean, it shows you, it's not just go into the address, but it, it shows you the breakdown there of, of really public safety, whether it's police officers or fire, to get into that building or to rescue somebody or, you know, look for something. I mean, that, I'd never, was, I mean, that was years ago, I saw that, it's probably all newer things now, you know, that.
Yeah, we have, we have pretty advanced technology, and the reason we can, can afford that is because we all share in it.
And there's no way we could afford it, or Scotts Valley, or Santa Cruz, or Watsonville, or anybody else.
No single agency.
And when we did it, it was expensive, and we all agreed at that at the time, but for what we had and what we could see in the future that was going to be our possibility, the possibility, here we are, and yet it's expensive, but it's a great system.
Yes, Ed.
Just a real quick comment. Dennis, I want to thank you for the, for your presentation. And, you know, a couple of things you mentioned, the CAD and the records, those are critical, but to me, you know, just the fact that we have available extra people to answer calls and, and just what Stephanie just touched on, the ability to have cutting-edge technology is invaluable, so I just want to thank you for the service you provide.
A piece that I didn't really touch on is, in a consolidated center, is what you touched on a little bit there, Ed, is the human resources in the room, right? So if Capitola has a big event, that doesn't just, that doesn't mean that one Capitola dispatcher is the only one working on that event. Santa Cruz is helping out, Sheriff's Office dispatcher's helping out, the fire dispatcher's helping out, and in essence, you, you paying for one person, but you really have up to 11 people there ready to.
10.5.
Were you, were you there the morning of the flood? Maybe we should ask a dispatcher to come and tell us what that was like.
I don't think I was there the morning of the flood, no. It was a weekend, wasn't it?
I, I was actually.
Were you there?
There when the pipe, right before the pipe broke.
What were you doing there?
We were actually having a board meeting, and I remember sitting there watching the rain out the window going, this can't be good. Good incident.
Any other questions, council members? Dennis, I, I had a question about the Next Generation 911. I know you've mentioned the capability of receiving texts, but what about texts with photos attached, or the ability to receive photos?
That's part of the Next Generation.
It is included.
Yeah. We're not certain how that's going to fit into our operation, or if that becomes evidence for a police department, so, so to speak, so, because there's, Rudy could speak to this better than me, but there's chain of evidence, and how do you keep control of that evidence? If somebody takes a picture of a suspect, what, why do with that? And how do we get it to Rudy? And, and what's the laws pertaining to, to chain of evidence? So I think that's, that's coming, and, and I know that's already out there in some places. We're not necessarily looking forward to it.
Well, I hope we can certainly work out those policy issues, I mean, and be prepared with the technology. I mean, it would seem to me that since we're in a, kind of a consolidated joint powers situation, and that the public's already attuned to calling 911, and that's the fastest mechanism to transmitting that kind of video information, I don't necessarily, it's probably not all necessarily evidence for a case down the line, but it seems like, as they say, a picture's worth a thousand words. And, and I think at some point in the future, a member of the public being able to either convey that or for their own safety, or transmitting information about locations as quickly as humanly possible, and having a repository to keep a record of that in one location that would serve the need. I, I mean, I, I would certainly, you know, applaud efforts, and I think that we, hopefully we could be moving in that direction.
It's coming.
In the future. Good.
It is coming.
It's good to hear. So thanks again. If there are no other questions from council members, thank you very much for being here this evening. Thank you for everything you do to keep our community safe.
You're welcome.
And, okay. All right. Good evening. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item 9B, which is to consider an agreement with the SoCal Union Elementary School District relating to the transferred title of the New Brighton Middle School Gym, the city's recreation fees, and the Jade Street Community Center. We have two recommended actions. One is approving a resolution authorizing the reconvenance of the New Brighton Middle School Gym to the school district, and the city making a one-time payment of $65,000 for gymnasium maintenance, and then a separate action, which is to accept and file a letter from the school district clarifying the city's use of the community center at Jade Street Park until the year 2032. We'll begin with a staff report.
Mr. Mayor, council members. So as the mayor described, this is a potential transaction to give the school district back its gym, and in addition, to file a letter that we received from the school district last week. Bit of background on the situation, in 1984, the school district conveyed some property on Washburn Avenue adjacent to the middle school to the city to build a gymnasium, which the city did at that time. There's conflicting language from the, in the 80s about when the, the city would give the property back to the district. There were some documents which stated that the terms, when the terms of the financing were completed, the city would give the property back to the, to the school district. The city indicated in other documents that it would give it back within 50 years on March 25th of 2032. Today, the terms of the financing are complete. The city has relatively limited use of the gym today by recreation classes, recreation enrollment in the league sports has decreased significantly in the last couple of years. In addition, it costs the city between $40,000 and $50,000 a year to maintain the facility. Some of that's in direct costs, some of those are in staff, staff costs. The, the agreement that is before you this evening was the result of long negotiations with the school district by staff. Basically, the gist of it is that we transfer title to the school district, to, back to the school district. The city would receive a reduced rate for future recreation classes that the recreation program would put on at the gymnasium. We would make a one-time contribution of $65,000 to help bring the gym, bring up the standard of maintenance at the gym, and that the district residents would receive the in-city rate for recreation classes as long as we continue to use the community center at Jade Street Park. In addition, in your packet, you'll see that, that there was a letter regarding the community center. That's another point that we've had a long relationship with the district about. In 82, the city and the district entered into a lease at Jade Street Park for the community center. The city built the community center there and has since operated it. Unfortunately, that original lease has proven problematic over the years and has been subject to numerous interpretations. As part of this negotiation, in a separate, separate deal, though, the, this, we received a letter last week from the superintendent confirming the fact that the school district recognizes the fact that the city will continue to have the right to occupy the community center until 2032. And really, really what that does for the city is helps clarify in terms of what our status is there, and if we're going to make investments in the facility, how long we have to recoup the money that we do put in. So I, I'm recommending this evening two separate actions, and I will note that the agreement with the school district was approved unanimously by their board last night, and the two separate actions would be to approve a resolution that authorized the reconvenance of real property and the execution of the grant deed, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement, the transfer's title, and authorize the one-time payment. And then in a separate motion, to accept and file a letter from Superintendent Castaneda, which clarifies the city may continue to use the community center at Jade Street until 2032. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Questions from council members?
Yes.
Yes, Mike?
Just clarification, it costs us between $50,000 and $60,000 a year of city general fund money to maintain the gym, so we would be free of that, correct?
That's correct.
We have no maintenance costs from this point on?
That's correct. It would be the school district's property.
And as I understand the agreement back from 2001, it could be construed that we were given notice in 2001, and we could have been asked to vacate Jade Street next year if we didn't obtain this agreement.
That was certainly my concern. You'll recall that in a previous budget session, budget study session, that I did mention that we had received notice in 2000 it was, and our concern was that in July of 2015, effectively, the city's lease would be terminated. So what this does, this letter basically retracts any chance that the city, that, that letter in 2000 could be construed as lease termination.
And finally, and once again, the real property, the land that Jade Street sits upon, is owned by the school district?
Yes.
Still seems to be a point that, you know, is missed by many people. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the staff report? Yes, Dennis?
Jamie, in your presentation, you noted that a letter from the superintendent for use of the Jade Street Community Center till 2032 was agreed to, to the superintendent. Is that not in the contract with the school district here?
It was, it was not part of this deal. It was a separate, separate negotiation, separate issue, and the real issue frankly came down to the question of whether or not there was going to be an allegation or a contention, if you will, that that 2,000 notice of termination would constitute the 15-year notice of termination for the community center. And this letter, if you will, pulls that away and takes, removes the specter of that potential possibility, and basically gives us certainty that they're honoring the lease term until March 25th of 2032.
I'm still a little confused. In other words, in the agreement that we see in here, there's no mention of their part of the agreement and, and guaranteeing us that we have use of it till 2032? Is that correct?
Not in the agreement. That's in attachment 2.
It looks funny, because there's an agreement, there's a letter. It looks like our part, our part's kind of in, less formal compared to their part, it looks like.
Did their board sign that agreement, though, that they would, they were going to allow us, their, I'm, I'm not talking about Henry, I'm talking about their board. Did they sign an agreement with, to the city that they're going to allow us to use it to 2032?
So the answer to that is, is, is no. Their board signed an agreement with the city in 1983 or '84, which allows the city to use it until 2032. So what they're saying is that that lease deal that the district board and the city council entered into in the 80s is still good, and we haven't given you notice, and the, we have a letter from the superintendent saying that.
Okay. I'm, I, you know, our, our experience in the past has not been good when words are passed and then not assigned agreement. It comes, it's come back to haunt us. And I'm a little concerned about this name not being in writing, that-
Well, let me ask the city attorney, John, this letter that's signed by the superintendent, Henry Castellata, does that, I mean, bind the school district to, you know, the, the terms of, of the original agreement or interpretation of the original agreement, that the city will have a presence at Jade Street until March 25th, 2032?
I don't think it legally binds it, but to the extent that the agreement can be interpreted in one of two ways, this is certainly damning evidence of that interpretate, the interpretation set forth in a letter in a court of law. So although it's not, it's not representative of, it's, if he's writing on behalf of the board saying it's that their interpretation, but we're not putting it in the form of a contract, it's not binding, but if we have gotten a dispute, this would be exhibit number one in favor of the city.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Yes, Ed.
Back to the city attorney. What better document would we ask for to guarantee our lease until 2032? Would we do the le-
A contract signed by both parties saying that, it could be either an amendment to the original agreement or a new contract, just saying, you know?
Does anything prohibit us from asking for that?
Well, the, the issue with that was that their district board, I think, was concerned about entering into new, new deals related to the Jade Street property, and this was where they had the most comfort level. They were concerned that if they entered a new deal, it could raise the specter of new issues, and I think from their standpoint, they said, "Look, you have it until 2032, Jamie. We didn't give you notice." And I said, "I'm not sure about that, frankly. I thought you had given us notice." And they said, "We didn't give you notice, we didn't give you notice." And they said, "We'll tell you we didn't give you notice." And so that's, that was ultimately the result of the compromise that we came to was, they were going to tell us, they didn't give us notice, they were going to tell us, "You got it till 2032. We have a lease till 2032." So at this point, for them to try to break that lease, they'd have to say, "Well, we're trying to break the lease, and on top of that, we're trying to say that the interpretation we previously gave you was wrong." I, I think at this point, we're locked up until 2032, and this was frankly the, the best compromise that I could reach in the overall transaction.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mike.
And again, to you, John, it seems like the importance of this letter is not to form another contractual arrangement-
Right.
-but to negate the interpretation that we've been giving notice.
Correct.
We already have a lease for this property pending notice, and what we were trying to eliminate was the, the specter of the year 2000 communications as having been given notice. So this is still, this is doing what we wanted to do, which is eliminate any question regarding the notice. We have it till 2032.
Why are they so concerned about giving us the agreement, the other half of the agreement?
Because there is an agreement already. There's one that exists that gives it to this period.
Because they, we, I think we tried to negotiate something, and, and we weren't sure what that was going to be regarding long-term use and the gym and so forth, and this is where it's come to-
And the, the school district did vote specifically and unanimously for this agreement, including the letter, last night, did it not?
I don't know if the letter was on their agenda. I know it was discussed. The agreement itself was specifically approved unanimously.
Well, that's why it would be good to have a meeting with everybody, talk about these things, and all five of us meet with all five of them and have a meeting of the minds, and to see where we are, because I think that there's, there's some ambiguity, and it would be a great benefit to everyone to meet and discuss the history, but where we're going in the future, where, you know, who's going to be taking care of the gym, who's going to be taking care of the community center, and, and, you know, what are the plans for it? How can we work together? How can we help each other like we used to? And we used to be such great partners with them, and we can again.
No, that's great, and Mr. Mayor, the, I think this is what we have here. It's telling us exactly who's going to take care of the gym. We are far ahead of the, where we were a month ago, and the fact that we have released responsibility for the gym is a boon to the city, and it's where it should be, which is in the hands of the school, which uses it on a daily basis. We also have more, a better feeling of our use of Jade Street for the next 20 years, and we were looking for that, so we could do some improvements. So I see nothing but good here, and I think a, a level of, you know, trust. I like the idea that we're extending the recreation fees through the whole district. I think anything we may miss in reduced registration fees will make up an increased use of our program, which always helps.
Okay. I'm going to, at this point, ask if there's any further questions to the staff report by council members, and if not clarifying questions, I'm going to open it up to public, and then we can bring it back for further deliberations. Is there a member of the public that would like to address the council on this agenda item?
My name's Jacque Perchin, I live on Monterey Street, Capitola, and I'm here to say that I support this agreement. And I have to admit that I went last night to the school board meeting, and the superintendent had a lot of good words to say about you, Jamie, and the negotiation process, he felt very good about that, and he said, "You're both of like mind. You, you have the same things when it comes to supporting your particular jurisdiction." One point I think is important, because of this agreement, the school district is going to have the ability to better manage the services they provide to their students, which means the sports. So they're going to have a lot more flexibility, so this is a benefit for them. The other thing that I particularly am concerned about is that, to me, this is the onset, or one of the things that's going to contribute, in my mind, to better relationships with the school district. I see moving forward that the school district and the city of Capitola potentially could do things that benefit the community in a joint manner. So those are the two reasons why I think this agreement should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Andy.
Well, I think that when you look at a 50-year agreement, and you see that, what, 24 of them have already gone by, 16 have gone by real quick, so what's going to happen in 32? And hopefully, some of us sitting here right now will be around to see that. But I think that if you think you, y'all have much more history with that bunch than I do, but we know we can't trust them. I agree with, with Councilmember Harland, make it say what, if it, it shouldn't say we can interpret it to mean this, it ought to say it. And if they can't say it, then I don't think we ought to sign it. And I don't see why, if, if push comes to shove, we don't want to maintain the gym, close the door and lock it up. Or let them have it and, and let, and don't give them the $65,000. I realize, you know, what went on a long time ago went on, but yet we don't know, and if they're loathe to put it in black and white, I would be loathe to have y'all sign it. So I would, I would support that you not, that you not go forward with this right now.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council? Saying none, I'm going to close the microphone. I'll bring it back to council for further deliberation and action. Yes, Ed.
Yeah, I didn't want to add fuel to the fire on this, because I actually like the agreement we have with the school district. I think the, the part with regard to the gym is pretty much open and shut. I think it's a good deal for us, and it puts the gym where it needs to be. I think the only question that just came up here was concern about whether we had a new lease, and, and actually, rereading the letter, what I'm reading here, it just says, it clarifies, it is accept and file a letter from the school that clarifies the continued lease that's already in existence. And I can understand now why we don't want to get into a new lease at this point, because that might involve things like tenant improvements and other situations which would compound our situations, which we don't want to do. I, I believe that we just wanted, the only purpose of this meeting, for the meetings with the school district, was to clarify that the lease did not expire in 50, and that's what the letter does. And I think the city attorney said that we have, can't remember the term you used, but damning evidence or something that, that would, would make this, and barring going into a new lease, which I don't think is what we really want, this is sufficient. So that, I, for that reason, I support this, and I'd make a motion that we adopt staff recommendation.
Discussion.
Can we, yeah, let's deal with two items. Let's deal with the resolution concerning the transfer of the gym to the school district first, and have that one motion, and then we'll move, then let's deal with the motion concerning the letter.
Mr. Mayor, is that motion, what motion's on the floor?
I'm going to retract that, make a motion to approve just, number one, the resolution for the, for the gym.
I will, I will second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second? Yes, Stephanie?
What was the discussion at the subcommittee? There's been a subcommittee that's met for a number of years, two councils, two of our council members and two school board members, that have lunch to discuss mutual projects, deeds, and things like that. So what was the discussion there about this? Are they prepared to handle the new maintenance costs?
Yes.
Yes.
They have it, but they're going to be able to budget for it?
We did not, I mean-
I mean, that's not our business, but they're curious.
Right, these are, these were just informal committee meetings between two members of the council and two members of the school district, you know, that was relationship building, and we, you know, talked about our mutual interest. This topic came up every now and then. We, you know, talked about frameworks for what their needs were, and of course, we talked about the city's interest and see if we could find those that fit. We didn't get into details, of course, this deal is that they take over the maintenance of the gym for the benefit of the community, and not, we didn't require, and not in that setting, that they prove that they have the money to do so. We assume that they're being a responsible body, they have to take care of their own facilities, and also being, having to be responsive to the community and to their students, to the parents in the community, that they're going to maintain and keep up the gym in an appropriate fashion. So, I mean, I think those are the natures of our discussions. I think that those discussions are probably going to go on, and we can continue to discuss, because this is just the opening. This is the beginning, and not all of it is perfect, not all of it is everything that we would like to do, but I think it's kind of sets the framework and sets a new era of better cooperation between the school district and the city council, working in tandem for the greater benefit of the community. And, and hopefully, that's, well, that is the spirit in which this has been developed, and it is a first step, and I hope everybody will view it as a first step, and try to get us back on the trajectory of moving toward more solid agreements concerning Jade Street, maybe concerning how the gym is now used, and as well Monterey Park, and how that is used and shared between the city and the school district. So I think it certainly opens the door for more to come, and, and hopefully, a meeting when the new city council and the new school district get elected in November, those bodies should come together and work collaboratively in the best interest of the community.
Well, I'll be happy to, to support the action, but I would like to get support from the council, to have the, the mayor at some point write a letter to the school board and invite them to a meeting to discuss the future, say in January, that we're very interested in working together and, and discussing mutual goals, and we would very much like to meet with them in, in January.
And I'm happy to do that, Stephanie. I, I think that would be a good next step.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Dennis?
I'd like to propose an alternative motion, and take, handle this one first, please. And that would be that, that we approve the agreement as outlined here, but we send this letter from, from, from Henry back to the school board for their blessing. In other words, are they agreeing with the school board director that, as worded here, the communication currents, the district will allow the city of Capitola to remain in possession of the community center located in the property through the end of the term of the lease, which is 2032. Henry's agreeing to this. The school, you, we should send this letter back to, to the school board and say, "Yes, we agree to the agreement on the gym and all the parts of this thing, but we, we want you to confirm that this is, this is the intent of the school board." And so that's my motion, is we send this letter back, and I, I, I'm sorry, but our experience in the past is the word of the school board director, I mean, the director, the superintendent, is not the word of, of the school board. They're two different things, as it can be done with the city, that we, we need to have some confirmation that, that school, the school board agrees with this letter. If this is coming in the same package here, they should have agreed to this. It should have been written in the first place, is that, that part of this agreement is, is that they, they agree that-
Well, that's why-
-the city of Capitola remain in possession of the community center through 2032.
That's why it'd be nice to know what the subcommittee said, if they had discussed some substance of this, to say, "Did they agree to this? Is this, you know, is this okay?"
I believe that's the second part of our action tonight, not the first.
Well, I, I want to, yeah, I mean, Dennis has proposed in a substitute motion, and I assume that it is substitute to the motion concerning the resolution with the gym, and you want to make that as a condition to that motion. So I'm going to ask if there's a second to the substitute motion? Here, none, the motion fails for the lack of a second. Are there further comments, discussions on the motion on the floor? Yes, Mike?
I'm just trying to read and clarify my motion.
No, go ahead, Dennis.
Dennis, I'm reading here, it says, "The agreement would transfer the ownership of the gymnasium from the city to the school district." Okay? The term used here is "school district," and then below that, the next paragraph, "Community Center Jade Street," "the school district," everything references the school district. So I'm confused at what you're asking for, not being sufficient from the school district. All of our agreements are with the school district, not with the board, unless I'm, you can correct me if there's a different language here.
Because this is, you're talking about the letter from the superintendent, is-
We're relying on the, the agreement, or what the superintendent is telling us as to the status of, of Jade Street Community Center.
But everything we're doing-
We have nothing in writing from the school board that agrees to, 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 to that, to that lease and us staying there. So what I'm saying is, if we're going to do this, if we're going to make this agreement, that we should, we should ask this letter, go back to the letter from Henry, go back for the school board's blessing, that's all.
But all the language that I'm reading here references the entity "school district," doesn't mention the board in any of the transactions. The SoCal Elementary School District, "school district" is the term, never, never "school board" used here, so-
You're right, but that is the board that determines what the school district does. So that's the governing board, just less the city council is for the city, that's all.
Well, again, I, I just want to, John, have you clarified that the superintendent of the school, by making representations, binds the school district and therefore binds the board of trustees of the school district?
Yeah, he's writing on behalf of the school district, and he can only get that direction from the, the school board. He can only make that representation, since the school board is the ultimate policymaker for the school district. If he's writing this letter without the, the, the board's sanction, I mean, that's an offense, you know, terminable offense, because he's, he's acting beyond the scope of his authority. He doesn't have the authority as a superintendent to make these commitments on behalf of the school district, only the school board does. So, and I think the other point to be made is that we're going to rely upon this letter by, in the future, making some improvements to the Jade Street community- by, in the future, making some improvements to the Jade Street Community Center. This letter is certainly key to our willingness to enter into this agreement that you're considering, and once you have relied on a representation that's made, that's known as detrimental reliance, and a court will then, that's additional evidence to support the fact that this is a binding commitment on behalf of the school district.
This is the same problem we found ourselves with six years ago, when we went through a series of lawsuits, or 10 years ago, went through a series of lawsuits, is unclear contracts and agreements, and we're going right back into that same thing again.
I'm gonna bring us back to the motion at hand, I mean, Dennis, do you have further comments about the resolution concerning the gym? Yes, Mike?
One last comment, I think it should be noted that we have a prior agreement from, you know, 40 years ago, that gives the school this exact, exactly what we're giving them right now in 2032. They would own the gym, without us doing anything tonight. So, what we're doing is we're saving the maintenance for that number of years. In addition, with regard to the $65,000, I think that's a small price to pay, because I think the deferred maintenance, it's no secret that we have not kept that gym up as well as we should have. You just need to walk through that gym to realize that we have been deficient, I believe we've been deficient, in maintaining the gym. And that $65,000 is a pretty cheap price to get out from under anything that's hiding in that gym structure right now.
Mike, I'm not, I'm not at all questioning that part of the deal.
No, I know, and you may have merit in what you're saying, I just think it's the next part of the action.
But they still have the right, remember, they took us to court, and they told us that, that they have the right within a certain number of days' notice to pull out, to pull this lease from underneath us. They still have that right. That's, that's what you're given, they're, they still have that right to do that.
Like I said, I think that that's the second half of this.
Yeah, can we, maybe we can, because we, there's two separate actions there that we're looking at, and we're kind of discussing the letter in the context of this motion to approve the conveyance of the gym. I think if we could maybe deal with the gym question first, and then we could discuss the merits of the letter in, you know, in the next motion, if there is one. So, I mean, unless it has some reference to the letter, or in, or in relationship to the resolution conveying the gym, I would like to defer any further talk about the letter for now, and let's deal with the gym question.
Can I have a question of procedure then? Does, does, does Henry's letter have any reference to this agreement at all, that we're approving?
No, it does not.
It does not?
No, they were separate negotiations.
Okay, any further, yes, Stephanie?
Well, I understand where Dennis is going, because we have been here before with them, and it, you know, we have been dealing with some vague language in the contracts before, and I think we were all hoping, or thinking that it might be clear by now, by 2014, but obviously, it still isn't, and so this is to try to clear that, clear that up. You know, I'm not crazy about giving them the gym, and, you know, as far as doing maintenance, we might not have been doing maintenance, but, you know, we haven't really had a plan there, because they've refused to meet with us. And that's what we need, is a plan to move forward, to maintain the gym and maintain the community center, and it's, so I'm not, I don't feel guilty about, about anything that's happening at the gym at all, I mean, we just have not had a good partnership to, you know, take care of things there, or at the community center, as well as we could have, and so things are getting old and worn out. I have no particular faith that, you know, they're gonna be kept up in the future, or anything, if things are gonna be rosy, or we're gonna have good relations in the future. And I know we have this other agreement, I wish we were talking to each other, I could have more faith in what we're doing. It's real hard to have, to take a letter, a word, you know, from a superintendent, you know, that's why I really want to meet, I know the subcommittee's meeting, that's wonderful, doesn't help me to have faith in the process, and what we're doing, the information.
All we're doing, if we don't agree to this, is perpetuating bad feelings. I think that the beings who suffer by our juvenile attitudes towards each other are the children, and they're our children. Whether they live in the city or not, if they're part of that school district, they're our children, we're gonna live in the world with them. So, anything that makes their, their situation better at that school site, I'm in favor of, and I think we need to move along and put the past behind us.
I totally agree, and I said I'm gonna support this, you know, it just, you know, once, you know, we gave $180,000, and then got kicked in the butt the next year, because they think we're terrible people, you know, you, you gotta learn after a while that, you know, it hurts, you know, when you, you put out, and you give, and you give, and you give, and, you know, and here we're gonna give them the gym, which they still won't meet with us, you know, that, I'm gonna try to make that happen before January, just to start the process, and...
Agreed.
And, you know, if people want, they want, they want to come, fine, if they don't all want to come, that's fine, but, you know, it's hard, it's hard to do a deal with people you're not talking to.
So with that, I'm gonna call the question, well, let's have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Harland?
Aye.
Councilwoman Norton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Botor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Termini?
Aye.
Mayor Story?
Aye, the motion passes unanimously. Now, let's move on to the second part of the recommended action, which is concerning the letter that is attached to our packet, which is the superintendent's confirmation that the city's occupancy and lease at the community center at Jade Street goes until the year 2032. And so let's begin deliberations, and we'll see if somebody wants to make a motion concerning the letter. Just to be clear, the recommend, recommended action is just to receive and accept the letter.
Is it just to receive and accept the letter, into the record, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, to rephrase, thank you, Mike, is to accept and, and file the letter into the record, okay, which clarifies that the city may continue to use the community center until 2032.
So, and a question to the city attorney, we do now have in our possession, from 1982, a 50-year lease for Jade Street.
Correct.
So, basically, this is just reaffirming a legal instrument that exists.
It does a little more than that, if you read the last sentence of the second to the last paragraph, it says, where's it, this communication confirms the district will allow the city of Capitola to remain in possession of the community center located on the property through the end of the term of the lease, which is March 25th, 2032. That's an unequivocal statement, so to the extent that the lease contains any right to terminate the lease before 2032, they're waiving that right in this letter.
And we're not signing this like we're participatory in this, in some kind of a contract, this is just being placed in our records...
Correct.
For future evidence, should we need it.
Right.
Well, that, I feel a little better about that, John, if you feel that they have no grounds to come back and pull the lease, but I still think that I will feel much more comfortable, and I think it's a duty to our community, that we confirm that in some way with the school board, that this is actually an action or a decision made by, that they, they agree to, that Henry made in this letter. I don't think that's asking too much.
You know, it's not, and I think that because of the action that the mayor has brought to our attention, is that I think we can accept this letter, take that action, and also add to the motion that we request from the school district, that since we had a unanimous agreement with the gym, we have unanimously, hopefully, accepted this letter, that they also affirm that Henry was acting on their behalf.
So we're asking for a letter back from the school board that confirms this letter?
I would be happy with them agendizing it, and, you know, in their own, I don't need a letter from them, I don't need any more paper. I'd just like to see them, as an agenda item, take it up, note that things have been accepted, and agreements have taken place, and that they agendize and accept in the record, in the public record, that Henry has acted on their behalf. I don't need another letter, I just want their, their action, and just as a request.
I'm comfortable with that.
They could put it on consent calendar, be sure.
I can confirm that, that they have seen this letter, and they agree to this letter.
And I think our, our passing everything unanimously is a great olive branch, and it's a great step forward, and, you know, everything is good, we accept this, please do the same, you know, put it on your consent, that they accepted Henry's letter, and we stand behind the letter, and that's my motion, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second that.
Right, there's a motion and a second by Dennis, thank you, Dennis. And I, before I call the question on this, I do wanna, I want to thank the council for, hopefully, I mean, at least on the first motion, unanimously moving forward in this transaction with the school district, and even with the letter. I know it's not perfect, it's not everything that we would want, but it is, I think, a move in the right direction, and the possibility of changing course where the school district is concerned. It may not work out, but we're nowhere soft than where we are now. I mean, actually, I think we're even in a better position, because it removes the cloud concerning the community center, in my view, that this letter, if nothing else, does that. And from here, I mean, if we open up ourselves and have, maybe move with confidence and trust, and try to forget the past, we may be able to forge better and greater things. Have those meetings that you want, Stephanie, and to be able to work together for the benefit of the, of the community that we both, both these bodies serve. So acknowledge it's not perfect, but it is a step, it opens up the possibility of us having even greater clarity, and even having a greater presence at the Jade Street Community Center. So I wanna, you know, I mean, thank the council, I want to thank staff, particularly Jamie, I thought that was, if everybody saw the Sentinel yesterday morning, there was a great article, thank you, John D., for that story about us coming to this, I think, historical moment in time. So it's an opportunity for us to embrace it with hope, move forward, and if things don't work out, we're nowhere soft than we are now. So let's take a chance, and see if we can move forward. Yes, Ed?
Just a, just a quick comment, in addition to what you said, I just want to acknowledge that I was fortunate enough to sit with Mayor Story on the subcommittee with the school board, and I'm glad that we are at this point we're at, I acknowledge every point the mayor made, and I just want to know that, if, as we've already made one unanimous vote, I think it took a little leap of faith of the school board to make a unanimous vote, to bring this offer to us, there were obvious some people that were not enamored with, with our offer. So I, I think we have come a long way, and I'm, I'm happy, and I hope we unanimously adopt this next measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. So if there are no further comments, I'm gonna call the question on the motion, and just to clarify, it is to accept and file the letter, and to make a request to the school district that they agendize the letter at their board of trustees meeting, and affirm its contents. So if I have that correctly, let's have a roll call vote, please, Sue.
Councilmember Harland?
Aye.
Councilwoman Norton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Botor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Termini?
Aye.
Mayor Story?
Aye, the motion passes unanimously. Thanks again, everyone, I, I'm, I really think this is a wonderful moment, and an opportunity for all of us, and so I hope that both parties, both the school district and the city, will embrace it for what it can be. So with that, we have other business this evening, we'll move on to item C, which is a considered resolution establishing department heads and chiefs of police compensation and benefits plan effective August 15, 2014. The recommended action by staff is to approve the resolution to that effect, and we'll begin with the staff report, Jamie, you gonna do, lead us in that?
I will, Mr. Mayor. So, council will recall that pursuant to our municipal code, the city manager makes all hiring decisions of department heads. Interestingly enough, the city has had a practice of having council members approve the actual contracts with our department heads for a long time, we've done that. It creates an interesting dynamic wherein prospective employees to the city are in a position of having their name publicly disclosed in the agenda report a week prior to the hearing, prior to being known whether or not they were gonna actually have a contract with the city. And in addition, frankly, it clouds a little bit the chain of authority, chain of command, who's actually making the hire for a specific position. So before you this evening is a recommendation effectively to create, we're calling it a department head and police chief compensation and benefit plan, it's not a memorandum of understanding, it's not a union contract, it simply establishes the parameters under which, as the city manager, I have the authority to hire the police chief or the department heads. It lays out the benefit structure, it lays out the pay scale, and, and in addition, there is one small, minor requirement that's included in there, but an important one, I think, that acknowledges that when we have a vacancy for a police chief, that the council will approve the plan by which we will recruit and choose and identify a future police chief candidate, which is actually, as the council will recall, the process that we used the last time we did have a police chief vacancy, as we brought a recruitment plan and identified specific subcommittees and outreach that we would do. So the recommendation this evening is to approve the benefits plan, there's no specific expiration date, in general, I will tend to recommend changes to this plan as we adjust other MOUs for other groups. If the council does approve it, the department heads have indicated that they will accept termination of their old contracts, and will hire them under this benefit plan at the same position where they were at today. So I'm available if there are any questions.
Other questions? Seeing none, I'll open the item up to the public, if a member of the public would like to address the council on this item.
I have a, I have a question, and hopefully, somebody can answer it. In, in reading this, is the accrual of vacation still an open-ended, or is there a cap on the amount that can be accrued?
Jamie?
So pursuant to this plan, it mirrors the current language that's in the, in our department head plans, so that all hours in excess of 360 in any given year are cashed out, so you can't accrue more than 360. The only exception to that is, is we have one longtime department head who has an old higher cap amount, but beyond that, it's 360 is the ceiling.
So, it's 360, but what's the 80, so it's 360, and you can cash out 80 hours, which will drop it to 160, or it's 360, and you can cash out 80 hours, which actually makes it then another 80 hours, not 360?
I'll take another whack at it, it's, it's a 360 cap that you're brought to every year of the last pay period in April, so, three, every pay period, the last pay period of April, your balance is brought down to 360 every year. So during the course of the year, you can go out back above it, it gets brought down. So effectively, it's what we call a soft cap in these terms, it's not use it or lose it, it just eliminates the possibility that there's this large liability that can accrue with a specific employee.
Is that clear as mud to you?
They can never, no employee can ever accrue more than 360 hours at the end of any fiscal year.
At the end of any fiscal year, but you're gonna get paid out for whatever you would have accrued at...
Above and beyond 360.
Above and beyond 360, so that is not, see, that's, this soft cap business is, you know, that's, you know, that's an additional liability of things, and I think that, you know, it ought to be treated, you get it, so you don't, y'all don't accrue monthly, you get one lump sum at the end of the year, and...
Well, actually, I, I don't want to get into every ramification or specifics about how vacation accrual is handled. You can certainly, I mean, you can contact Jamie after the meeting, okay?
Well, I, I understand, but, but y'all have it here, it's on the agenda, and...
No, vacation accruals aren't on the agenda.
I know it's not, but it's, but it's part of what everybody's agreeing to, and that's, and that's a question, and that's a big issue in the private sector. It is huge, and so I just think that this soft business is soft business, and so that's the reason I wanted to ask that, because I know it was, it was discussed in the past, and I think that's, that's part of the problem with maintaining budgets and, and providing services and taking care of people, and so that's, that's what I wanted to ask.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the microphone and bring it back to the council for discussion and possible action.
I'll move approval of item 9C, staff, and with staff recommendations.
And we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, yes, Ed.
Just a question for city manager. Just for clarification, there's no difference in accrual rate of vacation in the old contract and the new contract, there's nothing changed?
There's no change of accrual rate, there's no change of the cash out provisions, there's no change of the cap. This wasn't an op, we didn't take this as an opportunity to negotiate new terms in anyone's agreement, it was just translating the existing language over.
And, Mr. Mayor, one more question of the city manager. We have not entered into an MOU negotiation, or a salary adjustment, or in any way, any labor negotiations with this action. This is merely housekeeping to maintain consistency with regard to the new hiring of department heads, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to, I'll give Sue a minute to, no, go ahead, Sue.
Councilmember Harland?
Aye.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Councilmember Botter?
Aye.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Mayor Story?
Aye. The motion passes unanimously, which will bring us to item 9D, which is considered a loan agreement and approve a budget amendment to fund the successor agency's share of the settlement regarding the Leonard litigation. The recommended actions are to approve a loan agreement with the city of Capitola for $88,500 and approve a budget adjustment of $147,500 to amend the fiscal year 1415 budget to fund the successor agency's share of the settlement agreement. Can we have a staff report, please?
Mr. Mayor, council members, as the city attorney reported at a closed session, the city has settled the Leonard litigation. The incident, the alleged incident occurred on August 10th of 2012. That was at a time that the successor agency owned the Rispin property, and the injury occurred on the Rispin property, Rispin Period Trail, I should say, the alleged incident. The property was transferred to the city of Capitola. The transfer was finalized on October 10th of 2013. The total settlement is made up of a $295,000 payment to the plaintiff and the attorneys. That amount is split 50-50 between the city's liability insurance, JPA, and the city and successor agency. The city's 50% is being split 60-40 between the successor agency and the city, and I've got a chart showing this. In addition, the settlement agreement includes injunctive relief, wherein the city agrees to make repairs to the pathways through the Rispin Period Trail area. Those repairs are estimated to be between $800,000 and $900,000. They would take place over the next four years. They include reconstruction and modification of the existing ADA pathways. In addition, through the course of this litigation, we were notified and it was documented that the restrooms at Nob Hill, the public restrooms, don't comply with ADA. As part of the settlement agreement, the city agreed to close them, the city agreed to close those restrooms. So as I mentioned before, there's two components to the settlement agreement. The settlement agreement at $295,000, as I said, that would be split 50-50 between the Monterey Bay Self-Insurance Authority at $147,000 for them. In addition, the city and successor agency would split the $147,500. The city's portion, 40%, would be $59,000, and the successor agency's portion would be $88,500. Before you this evening is a proposed loan to loan the successor agency the funding to make the payments, because the successor agency doesn't have any cash available to make the payment today. And as I mentioned before, the injunctive relief, which is estimated at between $800,000 and $900,000, it would take place over the next four years, will be split 50-50 between the city and the successor agency. So if it's approved this evening, you, as the city council will consider the loan to the successor agency, and the successor agency will subsequent, in a subsequent meeting this evening, will consider the loan as well. We will submit the loan and the settlement package to the Oversight Board on August 28th. The Oversight Board has no authority to approve or to, to review the settlement agreement, but we wanted to send the, the overall loan through the Oversight Board and then send the entire package to the Department of Finance for the review and approval. How we would get reimbursement for this is through the ROPS process, the Recognized Obligation Schedule process, which basically will require us to submit payments for this in, I believe it would be in October, and the first available payment date would be January 2nd of 2015. And then what we would do is in subsequent ROPS is we have to schedule in the payments on the infrastructure improvements down the road. So with that, I'm available for questions.
Seeing none from council, I mean, the members of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Yes, sir.
By the way, hi, Stephanie.
Hi, David. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Thanks.
I'm not sure I've come here prepared to address the issue as it's laid out there. I just wanted to put it in a case for, I just heard that the restroom adjacent to Perry Park is going to be shut down, and frankly, I haven't the slightest idea why it has anything to do with the disability issue, because both restrooms, I had to, my cousin, who's a woman, also look in the women's restroom, both accommodate people in wheelchairs, plenty of room, and as for the rest of it, I'm just baffled. What, what exactly would be an annual cost for maintaining that restroom? What's the problem? I don't, I'm sorry, I don't get it.
Yeah, well, well, the issue was the city was sued for certain ADA injury as well as ADA conditions which violate the ADA. The plaintiffs and the, her law firm identified this restroom as not being ADA compliant, and it's, it's highly technical, the specific issues. Now, the exact figure on what it would cost us to bring it up to ADA compliance, did we have a estimate on that, Jamie?
The best estimates I've seen for the restroom to bring it into compliance are between $50,000 and $100,000.
Right. And just because of that expense, we, we at this point cannot bear that cost, and so the decision was made at this time to just close it, and, you know, until some future date when...
There's no possibility for somebody from the council just to walk over there and say, on a common sense basis, look at it and say, it is or it is not compliant?
Unfortunately, the ADA rules and regulations and laws that are imposed upon us, they don't always operate based on common sense. They don't even operate based on years of usage and, and accessibility by members of the disability community. Unfortunately, you know, that's the nature of our legal structure and which permits plaintiffs to make these kinds of allegations and to impose these unbearable costs. As you can see, you know, we incurred a great deal of cost, as it was, to both settle this case and to satisfy other ADA accessibility issues at other parts of Perry Park and other parts of the Rispin Mansion. And so, no, this, unfortunately for us, it doesn't bear upon the, the test of common sense.
It sure doesn't. This is the only, first off, it, first off, it quite obviously is usable by people in a wheelchair, and second off, it's the only all-day, all-week facility other than, that I know of, other than, you know, the Esplanade, where you have a restroom, you know? I mean, what do you, it's weird. You've got people coming down from Wharf Road, you know, it's a, it's a regular highway going back and forth there. It's, you know, have you discussed it with, like, Nob Hill, saying, oh, you know Nob Hill, you're going to be picking up a lot of the restroom use here now that we're gone, you know? How does that make you feel, people coming in here, you know, and, and Pete's Coffee and places like that? Mike, I keep hitting.
I'm sure we'll be hearing about it, so...
I'm a little frustrated.
Yeah, I, we understand, so are we.
So, so you're saying that is, it's, there's some, something about the date, okay, you had to make a, why were they so invested in making this part of the agreement? I mean, why, why would they want to shut down something they can't use and nobody can use now that is so much in need? I just don't get it.
Yeah. You know, I don't want to, you know, we, I'm certainly willing to talk to you after the meeting. I don't want to belabor the, the meeting to get into all the ramifications and nuances of, of attorneys and their aggressive pursuit of the ADA laws that are, are on the books. And this is a part of a strategy that they use to drive up costs and to, you know, I, for me, exact, exact, you know, attorney's fees.
I see.
And so those are, I mean, there, those are some of the unfortunate consequences of this kind of litigation, and, and it...
And no other public interest can assert itself against it. They're sort of, kind of on a god level or something like that on this, on...
Well, it, it, it comes down to a matter of economics, and it's an issue of how much money do we want to spend to fight this, because it goes into the legal system and which would also cost us a great deal of money. And so even though this is not our desired solution or resolution, we really felt that we were pushed into a corner and we had to make the best choice out of the unsavory options that were presented to us. And so, Mike, did you have a...
I had a question.
Sure.
That might address this. I'm frustrated with the lack of common sense today as well, but, Mr. City Manager, the building these restrooms are in was constructed and is owned by the County of Santa Cruz. Could we not petition the County of Santa Cruz to bring their restrooms up to standards, thus satisfying this particular plaintiff's needs?
Councilmember Termini, we, we could certainly ask. I have not been in any negotiations with county sanitation. My understanding from descriptions that I've heard from our public works directors, that county sanitation has allowed us to have the public restrooms there, but they don't, they don't view that as an amenity that they would provide, and they only provide it but for the city of Capitola.
I question whether those restrooms weren't required when they positioned that pumping station on city property as, as part of a, an amenity to the citizens of Capitola back when it was built, and that they should be made to bring them up. And I'm not saying we enter into a pitched legal battle with them, but I think we have some grounds to say to them, you know, this is part of this survey that was done by the, the attorney, the plaintiff's attorney, so you have restrooms that are not in compliance, County of Santa Cruz, we'd like you to bring them up to compliance so you can meet your requirements to provide the amenities to our citizens that you promised us when you built the pumping station.
It's like Zone 5. They'll say it's yours, and we say it's theirs, and, you know...
I bet you it turns into theirs real fast if we turn those pumps off.
We could sure ask, but, you know, we really have, we closed them before because we didn't, they weren't used very often, and it was a public nuisance, and...
And what wasn't used, the restrooms?
The restrooms weren't used very much.
As far as I can see, they're used a lot.
And so we, yeah, and so we didn't get very many complaints at the time, and we only got a couple people that came, and we said, sorry, just have to use CVS or, or, you know, somewhere, somewhere else. We were only, we, we only thought that a few people used it, and it was just a public nuisance, and it costing us more money than it was worth to keep them open. But if you think a lot of people use them, maybe we should hear, we should, we can, we can look into it.
Well, I'm, I'll be interested, because I would think there'd be a kind of an outcry, and not only that, not from people, but also from businesses or having to pick up the, the , I think, the call of nature.
Not that many people, yeah, have, have used it, because I've been in, I've been in CVS a lot, or Nob Hill, and, you know...
Where's the CVS, I'm sorry?
CVS, next to Long, next, CVS, yeah.
Oh, CVS, right, I'm sorry, right, yeah, well, oh, I see, you use CVS, or Nob Hill...
Yeah, I think they're, they're okay, yeah, they're okay with it.
Yeah, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, any further comments, David?
What?
Any further comments?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sure we will be hearing uproar from the businesses, you know, after this happens, so, yes, Sandy?
You know, I remember when you closed them before. I, I think people think it doesn't do them any good to come and complain, for the most part, and especially the people who walk through there. Now, people like me who run around complaining about everything, we're going to do it anyway, but, because I walk through there a lot, and I, when it was closed, I would stop at, you know, Nob Hill or whatever, but if it's a matter of not having $50,000, I would suggest you take that $44,000 that you're going to give that grant writing person and use it to make this ADA compliant and keep it for the people, you know? I mean, you don't have any trouble coming up with a couple of hundred grand for this, that, or whatever, and to sit here and say, we don't have $50,000 to fix that restroom, is sort of laughable.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close the microphone and bring it back to council for action.
I will make a motion to approve the staff recommendation, enter into the settlement, and to communicate with the county formally with regard to their, bringing their restrooms up to ADA compliance.
Is there a second?
My motion.
Yes, okay.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any further discussion? I'm just going to call for a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. This will bring us to the end of the regular meeting of the city council, and I will adjourn us to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be Thursday, September 11th, 2014, at 7:00 PM in the city hall chambers, which means we will not have another council meeting later in August, which will bring us to the meeting of the successor agency, to the former Capitola redevelopment agency, and we'll begin with a roll call.
Councilmember Harland?
Councilmember Norton?
Councilmember Botter?
Next, we have public comments, members of the public that would like to address the successor agency on item 9 on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, any board members, staff comments? We have a consent calendar, which are the minutes from meetings in February, June, May, looks like all the meetings from this year. So is there a motion to approve the minutes? Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, which will bring us to item... So I guess the loan agreement was on, well, we'll do the, I guess the loan, it was on the consent calendar, I missed that, my apologies, but can we have a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve the loan agreement and approve the budget amendment to fund the successor agency's share of the settlement regarding the Leonard litigation. Is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion a second, any further discussion? Any member of the public would like to address the council on this item?
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. There is no other business for the successor agency, so I will adjourn us to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the successor agency at a date, time, and location to be determined, which will bring us to the end of tonight's meeting. Thank you, everyone, and yes, Stephanie.
Could we, just at the next meeting or whenever it's convenient, just have an update on any code enforcement actions that have been happening around, or, not, not even at the next meeting, just maybe with the city manager's report? I hate to make that, get that, make that longer and longer, but I love having the public safety report on there, so we know what's been going on around town, and also if there's any code enforcement action that we're working on from the legal office or from the planning department, because I think there's one that we've been following that we're all sort of curious about, if anything happening on it now.
Yes, okay.
Sam?
Yes, Dennis.
I'd like to make a request to staff. I'd like to make a request to staff that we put the new master rail trail plan, put on a, on a council agenda for approval. When it was approved by the RTC, it requested that it goes back to individual jurisdictions for them to look at, give everybody a chance to look at what the plan does and how it benefits us.
Give us some time to read it and look at it, because it's a big document.
Was there a particular meeting?
Not particularly, I think anytime this year would be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to, I saw that article about that, that would be good for us to get some input on that, if we can, maybe we get copies of it?
Okay. Yes.
Or the plan that maybe, at least, just the part that borders us.
You don't want the EIR, you just want the plan. Nobody wants to read the ER.
Do you like a digital copy or a...
Do you like a digital copy or a hard copy?
Hard copy at the counter, maybe? Don't we have one at the counter? No, I don't think we have one yet.
Could we, could I ask that we, that come to the council before the November meeting? Could we do it in the last meeting in October?
Yes. I think that's probably, okay, you know, I'm not familiar with the schedule at this point, but I'll do my best to get it in October.
Great, yeah. I mean, I just would like an opportunity to participate in that.
And you would in November as well. We reseat the council at the December meeting.
Right, okay, that'd be fine, the first meeting in November as well. Thank you for reminding me. Any other comments as we close here? Hearing none. Thanks, everyone, and good night, Capitola.
Thank you to everyone. Thank you, our wonderful staff.